For the people who said, Henry, I can attend this meeting, but at 10:15? No, it's at 10:30. And I said, well, 10:15. And I really appreciate all of you being here. This was very short notice. We did not have a quorum for our regular scheduled meeting. We have action items on here that are really time sensitive. With your permission, we do have a quorum. We do not have a vice chair yet. And so I would recommend that once we call the meeting to order, that the first item you take up is the election of the vice chair. Now, I make no recommendations regarding who is the chair and the vice chair. I will just give you a few words of history. The chair and the vice chair positions have rotated between the city and the county. So the year that the chair is a county supervisor, the vice chair is a member of the Oakland City Council. So I leave you with that. I make no recommendations, but I am looking at who would normally be in that rotation, and I think, yes, that party is sitting between two of the members at the table. So if we could have the roll call, and we will ask Supervisor Chair Nate Miley to chair once he joins us.
Welcome to the meeting of the Special Meeting of the Oakland-Alameda Coliseum Authority, Thursday, June 26, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. We will start with the roll call. Commissioner Beam.
Present.
Commissioner Halbert.
Present and delivering a message from Supervisor Miley that he is on his way, asks that if it's possible to start without him, we do that. If it's not possible, obviously, we will wait for him, but he is on his way, just so you know. Thank you.
Very much.
Commissioner Iglesias.
Here.
Chair Miley is on his way. Commissioner Thompson.
Commissioner Thompson is excused.
Commissioner Vukasen is absent. And Commissioner, what did I miss? Commissioner Jenkins?
Yes, no, we have an old roster there. Commissioner Kaplan is no longer on the board. President of the Oakland City Council, Kevin Jenkins, is now representing the City of Oakland in that slot.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Present.
Excellent.
We have a request, I think, from Supervisor Halbert, by the way, of Supervisor Chair Miley, that we wait another few minutes. Did I hear that correctly?
He would be fine if we started without him, if that's possible. So that's a legal question, I suppose. But if we have to wait, we can do that as well. He's about five or 10 minutes away.
I got a question.
Yes, there's a question.
I got a question. So just for the record, I am here, Ken Houston. Is it any way possible to start and then just elect our vice chair, and then he runs it? Because I want Kevin Jenkins to be the vice chair.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so we're going to take a vote?
I think we're moving to Item 6A.
Is that where we are?
Yes.
Item 6A is resolution appointing a vice chair of Board of Commissioners for the remainder.
We're trying to get started, but we don't have a vice chair.
Year 2025.
They're figuring it out. Oh, can you promote Nate to a panelist, please? He's signed on in his office.
All right, and we will hold.
Promoted. Thank you.
We're going to hold for him to sign on, for Chairperson Miley to sign on. He's on. We're promoting him to a panelist.
Okay, it's Commissioner Miley. I see him.
Is on now?
He is on.
All right. Chairperson Miley is on, and so I think Chair Miley, if you heard this, there is a motion on the floor, I think there was, to elect Kevin Jenkins as the vice chair. And I think it was the second. Was there a second to that motion? So that's where we are right now.
Then I'll go ahead and call the roll. Commissioner Beam.
Are there public speakers?
Oh, sorry. Are there any public speakers for this item? I see no hands. I will call the roll. Commissioner Beam.
Approve.
Commissioner Halbert.
Approve.
Commissioner Houston.
Approve.
Commissioner Iglesias.
Approve.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Aye.
Commissioner Miley.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, barely. Commissioner Miley?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson is excused. Commissioner Vukasen is excused.
Mr. Secretary, for clarification of the record, it should reflect that the motion was to adopt the resolution, including the election of Commissioner Jenkins as a vice chair. As the JPA acts only by adoption of resolutions. Thank you.
All right, then, back to.
I think that council was suggesting, I think, that you actually read the resolution into the record, electing the vice chair. Was that a comment?
The motion had been, there was a motion to elect Commissioner Jenkins as the vice chair. However, the JPA, under its bylaws, acts only by adoption of resolutions. And so, just for clarity, there is a resolution in your packet with a blank. And so if we could read that resolution in the chair and confirm that that was the intent of the motion in the second.
I think we've got it. Ms. Lake is going to read the resolution, and then they will actually formally act on the resolution. And that's Item 6A is the actual resolution. Ms. Lake is substituting for us, and we thank her very much for doing that. Our secretary of the board is not present. Thank you, Ms. Lake. It's Item 6A, yes.
The title of the resolution is Resolution Appointing a Vice Chair of Board of Commissioners for the remainder of calendar year 2025. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board does hereby appoint Commissioner Jenkins as the vice chair of the board for the remainder of calendar year 2025.
I think that does it, unless there's a comment from council. Then I think you want to call the roll on the resolution.
Roll on the resolution. Commissioner Beam.
Yes, approve.
Commissioner Halbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Houston.
Aye.
Commissioner Iglesias.
Aye.
Vice Chair Jenkins.
Aye.
Chair Miley. Commissioner Thompsons and Vukasen are excused. This brings us to Item 3, Open Forum. If any members of the public wish to speak, please raise your hand, and we will provide two minutes. Yes, please join us.
Hey, good morning. Is it on? Well, I'll just speak loud. Hey, good morning, everyone. My name's Damian Rainey. Some of y'all have seen me come into these meetings. I do research, insights, and futures in entertainment, sports. I've worked for Electronic Arts, HBO, established the practice at the NFL. And I've also done research in foreign countries. One of those was in Barbados, looking at cricket after their World Cup. So just want to give everyone congratulations on the event a couple weeks ago. There are some great opportunities for improvement between the Coliseum and MLC to make the experience a lot smoother. I also wanted to bring up that the Super Bowl is coming, and there is, I don't know if you all have talked with the host committee yet, but there's a great opportunity to leverage our history as kind of a tailgating center. When you consider down there, Levi's, tailgating is not quite the same, and tailgating all across the league is starting to die down a whole lot. You know, we were one of the strongest traditions, so it could be a good opportunity to leverage the facility to do things, to do some kind of activation. Just want to put that in your ears for when you have conversations with the host committee. Yeah, it just plays on the whole history and classicness and kind of that authenticity that is missing, but is part of the city and this historical sites brand. Thank you.
Damian, do the chair. Send us those recommendations. Send them to me.
Okay.
Because I want to see what they are, or you can send them to the whole board, because I wanted to see what your ideas are, so we can address them.
All right, cool. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further hands, this takes us to Item 4 on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes, May 19, 2025.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Beam, or Commissioner Beam, and a second by Vice Chair Jenkins, calling the roll. Commissioner Beam.
Approve.
Commissioner Halbert. Commissioner Houston.
Aye.
Commissioner Iglesias.
Aye.
Vice Chair Jenkins.
Aye.
Chair Miley. Chair Miley.
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioners Thompson and Vukasen are excused. This brings us.
Through the chair, there's also the minutes for April 18 in the packet.
All three? I said May 19. There also is listed May 12 and April 18, so all three?
Yes.
Apologies. So a second, I'd look for a second motion to approve the minutes for May 12, as well as April 18.
Some vote. Second.
The motion is moved by Vice Chair Jenkins, seconded by Commissioner Beam, calling the roll. Commissioner Beam.
Oh, approve.
Commissioner Halbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Houston.
Aye.
Commissioner Iglesias.
Aye.
Vice Chair Jenkins.
Aye.
Chair Miley. Chair Miley.
Aye. Aye.
And Commissioners Thompson and Vukasen are excused. This takes us to Item 5A, which is the Executive Director's Report.
Thank you very much. I will try to be brief. I have asked the Assistant Controller if he would share his screen on Items 1 and 2. The first, I'll give Craig a minute, if he's on, to share screen. It's in your packet. I'd like, if he can share his screen, though, for those who are joining us remotely, particularly the public, if they can see that. In the meantime, I will go ahead and summarize this. The third quarter ends on March 31 of the year. Because of the lag time for gathering all of the information, making sure that it's all accurate and accounted for, there is a delay in presenting this third quarter budget that is typical. It's important, though, because it helps to guide us in preparing the proposed budget for the next fiscal year. The third quarter is looking good. It's continued to look very good. We're in a positive territory. We are expecting that there will be a surplus at the end of the year, which is a combination of the revenues exceeding our projections and expenditures coming in below the projections. We will have the actual closing report not until September. The fiscal year doesn't close, of course, until June 30. Then we have to do all of the audits, go through all the financial records, and then once those are audited, we will know what the actual surplus is. The largest revenue category is a combination of city and counties contributions, and that's a total of $9.8 million. The reason it was less is we used the surplus last year to reduce the amount of contributions actually necessary from the city and the county. The largest category of revenues continues to be the Warriors' debt service payment. And that payment has currently, now, I think, actually has been made for the current fiscal year. Administration, legal, and audit expenditures are all coming in under budget. Coliseum operation, which is our largest category, we expect to be $4.2 million below the budget. Capital outlay is projected to be about $4 million under budget. And this is primarily due to delays in purchase equipment, executing contracts, starting the contracts, having the contracts actually completed. So there, each year, is some carryover of these major projects. All in all, when it's summed up, we are fully expecting not only to be balanced, but to have a few million dollars in surplus over and above what we had projected. There's no action required on that. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have or comments that you might want to make.
First of all, congratulations to the team on presenting this budget. It's amazing, because it's a bloodbath out there, right, for a lot of organizations? And, you know, organizations you never think of struggling right now are really having a tough time, so to have this kind of budget and the work that's been done is really amazing. That's how I see it, just because I just see a lot of the challenges out in the community right now, and a lot of other organizations and stuff like that, and cities, and you name it, right? So, super well done, and kudos to you guys.
Thank you for the comment. The congratulations belong largely to the people who are sitting out here and the amazing team that supports them. I cannot say enough for Nicole Strange and this amazing, talented group. So the congratulations go largely that way. I am the, to say I'm the conductor, gives me too much credit, because the people who are playing these instruments and making all these wonderful sounds, some of them are sitting there, and some of them you don't see. But just an amazing, amazing team. I can't say enough for it. If there are no other comments, we'll go.
I would like to just second that. I think that, you know, the activation that we're seeing at the Coliseum with all the major sports teams leaving and still continually to find ways, Nicole and her staff are finding ways to keep this activated in East Oakland is huge, and also for the City of Oakland, and for the region itself. So I want to say thank you as well to Nicole and her team. And, you know, we have this new goal coming up, I guess, with the Super Bowl coming in, and I want to see that, us activate the Coliseum. And I love the idea of a giant tailgate. So those are some great ideas outside the box, so I'm glad that we had speakers today talking about that.
Thank you. If there are no further comments, I'd like to move to the proposed budget for next fiscal We have proposed a budget for the next fiscal year, which is '25-'26, in the amount of Again, we, with the fund balance and the city and county's contributions, we totaled at $32,909,000. Revenues estimated to be about $11.4 million, and that's the city and county's contribution of $19 million. And the fund balance we're allocating to this budget of $2.5 million. Again, the Warriors' debt service payment, $5,231,000. This is the final payment from the Warriors. You may recall that when the Warriors left, there was a dispute. We prevailed at arbitration, Superior Court, Court of Appeal, and Supreme Court. And the Warriors were obligated to pay the remaining debt service on the arena. That final payment is scheduled for next fiscal year. So when you take a look at that budget, it is going to show for next year that $5 million, and then the year after that, there will be no contributions from the Warriors. There's little change in administration audit fees and management fees in next year's budget. The capital outlay is reduced by $4 million from last year. We only undertake capital improvements that are necessary, and they are not even. So some years, we have a fairly large amount of capital improvements we need to make in both of the facilities, and in some years, less. There is an increase in legal expenses, and that is anticipation of increased litigation costs. I should mention that since I've been here over six years, I don't think there's been a single year that our council, for sure that's true, has relied on any outside counsel. So if you look at the last five years, although we budget for legal expenses, and that's for expenses we incur for outside counsel. The counties designated counsel to this board and the cities designated counsel to this board are volunteers. They've absorbed that. That's part of their ongoing duties and responsibilities. I'm pretty, I'm glad that they don't, the city and county don't pay a whole lot of attention to that, because they spend a lot of time, they spend a lot of time working on our stuff. And rarely have they relied on outside counsel. As I said, since I've been here, I don't think, except for maybe a tail end of that first year, there's been any expense. So there will be, this year, we're incurring some right now. We will probably incur some next year, but that's budgeted, and the budget can cover that with no major constraints. Just wanted to highlight that. The largest increase is $3.3 million over last year, and this is largely due to the Coliseum operations, because when the A's left, we had to absorb certain costs that they were paying for. In addition to their $1.25 million lease payment, we charged them for their utility costs for their '81 games, and they were using electricity, water, and all, we were passing those costs back on to them. Now, including their proportion of other costs as well. We now have to absorb those whenever we have events at the stadium. So that's part of the increase that you see there for the Coliseum operations. But it's still within the range of the budget that we have prepared. Given past performance, I do want to point this out. The stadium continues to require a deep subsidy of about $12 to $14 million a year. I have pointed that out again and again and again. The stadium and the arena have never, the arena has, with the Warriors covering the debt service, but the stadium has never covered its operations, even when the Raiders and the A's were there, still required subsidies from the city and the county. And so once the Warriors' payment has been made, and there is no more debt service, remember that the debt on the stadium was retired February of this year. The debt on the arena will be retired February 1 of 2026. The debt will go away, but the deficit for operating the stadium will not go away. I just want to emphasize that again. It will still require a subsidy from somebody if the stadium continues to be operated. That's what I have for next year's budget. It's balanced. We think that our projections are reasonable. They are, by professional standards, conservative, but not ridiculously so. So we do tend, in the best of practice, to be a little conservative on how much we think we're going to generate in terms of revenues, and we tend to be a little bit conservative on how much we're going to spend, which means that we generally project that we're going to spend slightly more than what actually happens at the end of the year. But that's calibrated, so June 30 of next year, we will be balanced. We've always been balanced, and you will too, if you do that. I'd be happy to respond to any questions or comments you have regarding the budget.
So I want to move approval, and then I need to lead by 9:45 to go run rules at the city? So if we can get the action items.
Yes.
Do we have a quorum if I leave?
You do. Do you have a quorum if you leave?
If I leave?
I think we do, but we're going to try to push along, so.
Okay, I'll get it. Move approval.
Then with that, let's go, I have one more action item, and then we can go to the action items. The third item is an amendment to the Levy contract. Levy provides food and beverage services to the arena. Their contract is scheduled to expire August 31 of this year. We have been in negotiations with them with the help of the Bigelow companies to come to an agreement regarding the amending their contract. And what we have proposed is to amend their contract, so it would expire, right now, with this amendment, on June 30 of 2026. We need to align the AEG contract with the Levy contract. Right now, the AEG contract expires on June 30, 2026. I fully expect by the first of the year, or shortly thereafter, to come back and recommend an amendment to both the AEG contract and the Levy contract, to go beyond June 30, 2026, because we fully expect that we or somebody will be managing the arena. So that will come back to you. Just quickly, the changes that we made, their current structure, and you will see that, I will go through all of that, was based on tiers. First, $3,035,000, $3,005,000, $42.5,000, $5,000,000 plus, 45%. And then the premium catering. We changed that and collapsed those categories, so that all receipts now will be 34.5%, premium catering, 20%, and then the subcontracting income, 50%. That puts them pretty close with what they initially asked us for. We did not agree to that, because we wanted to make sure that with the arrangement that we have come up with, that there, everybody's got some skin in this game. And what they had first proposed was a management fee plus 5% of the net receipts. We rearranged that, and with Bigelow's help, and Levy agreed. This got them pretty much back to what they were originally asking for. They have experienced some major increases in the operations. Part of that is labor. We all know that. They had to negotiate contracts. All expenses have gone up, insurance, et cetera, et cetera. But we think this is a fair and reasonable agreement. It is for a 10-month period, and I would recommend approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond to those.
Commissioner Halbert?
And then we can go to the actions.
Commissioner Halbert has his hand raised, and then we can.
Yes, question, does the budget proposed include costs associated with completing the decommissioning of the A's from their tenancy? And could you comment in this Executive Director's Report on the status of that? And if it's more appropriate that we have a closed session follow-up, maybe we could schedule that in the near future? But I'm just curious about the costs associated with that and the possible expenses, or, anyway, is that included in the budget?
I will answer the first part of the question. I would defer to council for the second part. This budget anticipates all of our anticipated expenditures across the board. Everything that we think might happen is included in this budget proposal. With respect to the second part of your question, I would defer to council to respond to that.
I don't have any further comment.
Can we schedule a special, rather, at our next meeting, an update either in closed session or in open session? Can we put that on a future agenda?
So we'll work with Executive Director Gardner to arrange for an update for you in the future.
Thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you. Did that answer your question?
If there's nothing else you can say, reporting out, yes, it does. That's.
Okay, thank you. We'll follow up.
Thank you.
We'll follow up.
Thank you very much.
Through the chair, I just have a question. This stadium is a huge concern for me. It's always been a huge concern about the money. And the last time that I was in Seattle on Zoom, it had dropped. We were talking about the booking. I know 12 million to 14 million come from the general fund every year, so when that falls off, it's going to be even more. So that stadium is a real concern to me. Like you had said, it's a huge concern about who is that going to fall on? Is it going to fall on us or the new owner? I just want to make that statement.
I can respond briefly. It depends. If the stadium continues to be operated, based on now 29 years of history, it is highly unlikely that, under the most optimistic of circumstances regarding major events in a stadium, that it will cover the cost of operating it. And realistically, for the stadium without a major sports franchise in there drawing tens of thousands of people, and again, even when we had that, it didn't cover it, we have to compete with San Francisco and San Jose for events in the stadium. They have stadiums too. And there are not that many big events that come this way or require that size. We are more than competitive in the arena.
Okay, I just wanted to share that, and I wanted to say that no, no city has the crowd that we have. So what Damian said, we could pull some people. We got a fan basis off the hook. So I just want to share that, and this moving forward.
Okay. If there, are there any other questions or comments? If not, I would ask our acting secretary if we can move to the action items that are listed on the agenda, and the attorneys can respond if there's any question on item number 6D. But the others have been presented to you.
And before we move on.
And you've already acted on 6A.
Should we pause our public comments until we come back to 5B to take comments on item 5 in entirety?
I would recommend that, yes, please. Yes.
So moving on to new business, we've already addressed item 6A. Item 6B is resolution approving the budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 for the Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum Authority.
Move.
Move approval?
Second.
This item was moved by Commissioner Halbert, seconded by Commissioner Beam. Roll call, Commissioner Beam.
Approve.
Commissioner Halbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Houston.
Approve.
Commissioner Iglesias.
Aye.
Vice Chair Jenkins.
Aye.
Chair Miley.
Aye.
Got it. And Commissioners Thompson and Vukasen are excused. The next item is item 6C, resolution approving the First Amendment to the Arena Concession License Agreement with Levy Premium Food Service Limited Partnership for Food and Beverage Concession Services in the Oakland Arena.
So moved.
Second.
The item was moved by Vice Chair Jenkins, seconded by Commissioner Beam. Roll call, Commissioner Beam.
Approve.
Commissioner Halbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Houston.
Aye.
Commissioner Iglesias.
Aye.
Vice Chair Jenkins.
Aye.
Chair Miley.
Aye.
And Commissioners Thompson and Vukasen are excused. Item 6D, resolution approving a settlement agreement with TP Windows Inc. and authorizing execution of the settlement agreement by the executive director and payment of the sum of $75,000 to TP Windows Inc.
So moved.
Second.
The item was moved by Commissioner Beam, seconded by Commissioner Iglesias. Roll call, Commissioner Beam.
Approve.
Commissioner Halbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Houston.
Aye.
Commissioner Iglesias.
Aye.
Vice Chair Jenkins.
Aye.
Chair Miley.
Aye.
And Commissioners Thompson and Vukasen are excused. Resolution is passed.
Are there any public speakers?
Are there any public, if there are any public speakers for item 6, please raise your hand, and you'll have two minutes to speak. Does not appear there are any speakers on item 6. We'll move back to item 5B, General Manager Board Report, Nicole Strange.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll start out with the event activity. Added events, Baikyun, July 3rd, 2025. In the stadium, Mexico versus Japan soccer game, September 6th, 2025. NBA Youngboy, September 12th, in the arena. Disney on Ice, October 16th through the 19th, in the arena. Schub, August 22nd, in the arena. Brandy and Monica, November 8th, 2025. Burna Boy, November 18th, 2025. And a recently canceled show, Santa Fe Clan in Shoreline, Mofoia, that was scheduled for July 26th, 2025. June has been a great month at the Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum. With the Oakland Roots and Soul kicking things off, and then nine matches in seven days with Major League Cricket, the atmosphere has been awesome. We've seen so many great press mentions, and can't wait to keep this momentum going with another Roots game this Saturday, and that'll lead into a busy July of concerts in the arena. We also have two community events coming up this summer hosted by our AEG Oakland Community Foundation. Safe Kids Day is on July 19th, and the Back to School Shoe Giveaway and Health and Community Fair is on August 23rd. These are both great free events for our Oakland community focused on child safety, education, and free supplies to help families in need. More information about both events and how to register for free items can be found in the news section of our website. Lastly, as you entered today, I'm sure you saw our latest mural highlighting the Grateful Dead, a nod to their incredible 66 performances here at the Oakland Coliseum Complex. We're excited to continue to showcase the iconic performances of both of these historic Any questions?
Can you, Nicole, talk about the cricket? I came on the first day, and I didn't see afterwards, but how was the crowd overall? Was it, what, we anticipated, less, more?
The home opener was amazing. I believe over the course of the nine games, there was about 25,000 to 30,000 total people. Some games had more people, some games had less, but the atmosphere and the environment was amazing. Like, these fans, they didn't leave their seats. Like, some of the games were almost four hours, and they did not miss a play. I personally learned a lot about cricket. We actually have a video to show you that shows the load-in to cricket.
Quick question, Nicole. Can you email us information about the events on July 19th and August 23rd?
Absolutely.
So then we could just share with our networks. And then our former commissioner just sent an article in the East Bay Times about why cricket's debut at the Oakland Coliseum could just be the first of big things to come. So Rebecca just sent that to us. So I think we got to share that out, too.
So this is the load-in of the drop-in wickets. There's actually two wickets broken up into four separate pieces. They had to put field covering down, and then you see the huge crane coming in on the field covering and dropping in the four different pieces of the wickets.
You can see anything? I don't see anything.
Unfortunately, the screen share function is disabled on today's meeting.
So they can receive the vote.
Nicole, can this be shared with the commissioners?
Yeah, we'll share that, this out. Commissioner Miley, we'll send you the video link. And if you, if you go out there now, so obviously, the cricket wickets have been removed by the crane, and new sod has been dropped, and we're ready to play soccer already for this Saturday's game.
When we, when we transform the field back to soccer, the lines, are they painted by our crew, or is that the Roots crew that put the lines in?
They're painted by our crew. That's actually happening this morning. We're testing out a robot.
I was going to ask you, have you tried the new robots?
We've tried it for the whole season, and it works actually really well.
Okay.
So it'll, it'll happen this morning.
Will we get a video of that as well?
We could.
And I see.
Maybe.
Commissioner Halbert has his hand raised.
Yeah, I love the idea of getting a video of the robot painting, and I look forward to the video clip of the wicket installation. I just want to also uplift our former commissioner Kaplan for being so vigilant in sending us wonderful articles about cricket. I think it is just the beginning of what can be a vital revitalizing of the Coliseum. My question for Nicole is, and you're doing an outstanding job bringing events, but I also want to just make sure, are there any barriers that you have to booking events in either stadium or the arena, recognizing that the arena is in a little different situation than the stadium, and recognizing that we have timing limitations of contracting between now and the end of the fiscal year, June 30th of 2026? Yet we're fast approaching the point in time when people will want to book past that timeframe. Is there anything we can do to help you, help us bring more events either to the arena and/or to the stadium? Two different questions for you.
Yeah, thank you. So we do have the ad hoc committee that was formed, and we have already met and discussed events in the arena for 2026, and we've discussed events in the stadium. I think the, as discussed via the budget, the stadium past June 30th, 2026 is a little, has a little bigger question mark because of that price tag of 12 to 14 million dollars. So I think that is a hurdle that still needs to be addressed in the future.
I might just add quickly that that is, that issue is at the very top of our list of focus right now, because we are anticipating a change in ownership somewhere around the end of June of 2026. I am really moving pretty much full speed ahead on arena events, and have started and will continue those conversations with prospective owners about both of these. More hesitant about the stadium going past June 30, 2026, but we're having those discussions as well. And underpinning all of this, of course, is this issue of a potential deficit of operating the stadium. And so just want to make sure that we understand, and future owners understand, what those complications are. Having said that, we're doing everything that we can to attract as many events as we can, and no breaks on the arena whatsoever. Flashing yellow signs on the stadium until we get more clarity.
If possible, I would like to request a standing agenda either closed session or open session to let our board know the latest and weigh in on providing direction as we move forward. Either update us in open session or closed session at every meeting until this is resolved.
We certainly will do that, and quite excited about presenting that to you. Ms. Strange did mention at one of your previous meetings, you did appoint an ad hoc committee, and we never expected that to be the only place where we'd be reporting back on our progress. And so we will be guided by the advice we get from the ad hoc committee, and we'll be reporting that to the full board, and we can certainly do that at every meeting. I think it's in our collective interest to do that, so that we're all staying abreast at the same time with the most timely information about where we are. This is a pivotal moment for us and for the operation and for the future. The ad hoc committee members are, Chair Miley is the chair of the ad hoc committee, Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Houston, and who was our fourth member? We have a fourth member, a beam, and Commissioner Beam.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So that's the ad hoc committee. But absolutely, we will report starting at our next meeting of where we.
Thank you so much. I so appreciate you and the ad hoc committee. Thank you very much.
And through the chair, I just want to say, I totally, 100% agree with Supervisor Hubbard on that, because that's very critical, and I've been hearing everything you said, Henry, Mr. Gardner.
All right. With that, if, for members of the public wishing to speak on item 5, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands, this brings us to the adjournment of the meeting. It is 9:54, and the June 26, 2025 Oakland-Alameda County Coliseum Authority meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, as our secretary said, it is 9, what time is it?
54.
And I promised that not one minute past 10:50. We're good, sure. Thank you all very much. We appreciate your making the time for this last-minute special meeting, but we're desperately got some of those action items approved before June 30th. Thank you all very much.
Bye, all. Thank you.[1637.82]
Bye, all. Thank you.